Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sure. So I'd like to call the planning commission to order. Would anybody like to read the land acknowledgement?
I create it. Melissa?
Yeah.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of the native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land. We call home our relationship with the city and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European-American immigration began in 1800.
Uh, thank you. Can I have an approval of the today's agenda, please?
Someone.
Okay.
I second.
Uh, the agenda is approved. Any dissenters? Okay, so next, moving on to the meeting minutes from November 15th. Did everybody get a chance to listen to it? Um, any changes? Can I get a motion to approve the meeting? That's present.
I need to approve the meeting minutes. A second.
Hey, uh, approval. Oh, a vote, all in favor?
I.
And then, I guess the next item is the meeting date for next planning mission, January 10th. Uh, is there, is that doable for everybody?
I will be calling in from Hawaii. You know, but your background.
Yeah.
You will change your background so it doesn't create too much fallacy.
I'll be absent, but I can call if necessary.
It looks like we're about to form, and I assume since it's our regular meeting time, it should be fine. Okay, so January 10th.
Don't have any.
Citizen comments. Okay, all right, so carry on. Do we have any, a report from a city council member? Well, we have two city council members today, but are these all?
I'll, I'll just be brief. You know, we adopted, as I mentioned last time, our biennial budget. So for 2023 and 2024, and one of the provisions there is contracts with community partners who provide social services in our, in our city. So we did approve funding at our last council meeting. We did approve funding for hang time at Kala, uh, Shoreline Lake Forest Park Senior Center. Let's see, what else? We have third place, Friends of Third Place, Shoreline Lake Forest Park Arts or Shore Lake Arts. And what else, John? Oh, and for the homelessness authority, which where we have not contributed to previously. Of Center for Human Services is another one. So there are usual community partners. We try to, you know, we also provided COVID funding for that. So just, just, it's not really related to the planning commission, but I thought from a community point of view, you'd want to know that. And then with respect to Sound Transit, the council made a motion to request that the Sound Transit Board and executive give a 90-day pause to their planning for the project to allow community engagement and negotiation of project alternatives and mitigation provisions. So we'll see what the effect of that is. There is a board meeting this week that I think we have some community members who are planning to attend this person at that Sound Transit board meeting. So we'll see what happens. But I think our sense was that absent something like that, momentum was carrying in forward without sufficient, you know, tailoring of the project to the Lake Forest Park. Anyway, those are just the highlights right now. Looking ahead. We do need to take up the recommendations early in 2023, the recommendations you guys already provided for signage and reasonable use exemptions. So I'm looking forward to that. Anything to add, John?
No, you covered that very well. I did not remember all of the organizations.
Yeah, I just. I think I got the ball. I feel pretty good.
Thank you. I've been a council member for a while. Um, with that, I guess, and we'll move on to old business, and I think Steve will take over the large vast part of this as you're going to kind of shepherding us towards the cop plan review.
Sure, yeah. You wanted to go to guests, Saunders, Don Lebo, former planning commissioner and both former planning commissioner chair. I think both of you had, you were chair at some point during the cop plan process, but maybe not. No, Richard was. Um, it was long. But either way, you were both there for a lot of the, if not all of it. So I, there was definitely some interest on commissioners to, to hear about your experience of that process and, and, you know, any, any thoughts, you know, you have about the, the process and advice that might be helpful to this group of commissioners would be appreciated. So I guess who would like to go first?
Here.
I've got some notes that I, I looked up, but certainly, you know, as I go, if people have questions that come up, please just interrupt me. You know, I want to make sure it's valuable to you. So I guess the first thing I'd say is you know, the cop plan is a very important kind of pillar for everything the city does. And it's very important to the policy, the, and the the laws that the city creates, the city council creates. But it's also a very important document for the community and for grants, you know, for the city to be able to write grants. So I think there's multiple, although the, the main role is policy, realize that it does have other other uses and other ways that it's consumed. I, I think if anybody here hasn't taken the short course in planning, uh, that that is something you should do because it's going to give you basis of the broadband act, some of those kind of basic legal stuff that you need to know, you know, background. So if you haven't taken the course or you, there should be information online, I would think now where you could get a lot of information about the course.
Yeah, it's now a series of videos that you can watch. I'm going to send you some links to appreciate the reminder.
Yeah, that's it. That's great because when we were taking, when it was offered to us, we had to wait, getting this to offer once a year, like in category or something. So that's the progress. Um, so no particular order. I mean, public outreach is really important. I think there is, you know, there's multiple avenues that, that you can go through. Reading your notes looked like you were talking about some engagement, you know, some first engagement. Uh, there's, you know, lots of electronic, you know, digital ways to engage now too. I would just realize that, you know, you want a mixture, you want a blend. Certainly, the public meetings are very important, but you can get a blend so you can reach, you know, people who have different access to, you know, different ways to communicate. John, anything you want to add on to?
Um, just for those that I haven't met, I'm John Lebo. I'm a city council member, and I was on the planning commission for about seven years.
I think they're like a question.
Yeah, I can't remember. I think I was chair for almost three years. Um, I really enjoyed it, but my background is architecture and so planning and built environment is something that I've always enjoyed doing. I'm thinking in terms of being aspirational because it is to look forward to the future. What would you want this community to be in 2025 or years going forward, even though it's updated on a periodic basis? Do think far in advance, not just what you might see in five years, but really think about 25 years and how you want to think in terms of aspirational. I found it helpful to read some of, to read the old plan, to read the Lake Forest Park Legacy and just becoming familiar with the documents. They are very structured. And so when you read them, it's kind of like, well, it seems rather formal. But what you're looking for is sort of the aspirations that are in the documents. And as Richard pointed out, it is, it is important for a policy and grants and other requests. Um, you'll probably read it and say, you know, this seems outdated, even though it's only a few years ago. And the answer to that is probably because we live in a dynamic environment and things change. And whether it's about housing or the environment or climate, some of the things that we're talking about today, we didn't talk about that much detail five years ago. And so do think about what you're seeing around you today and, and not just look at it saying, I wonder why they didn't talk about that then, and why shouldn't we be talking about it now? And so I think it was a wonderful time. It took quite a bit of effort and we had a wonderful consultant. And the consultant does a lot of the legwork. So it was very refreshing to say is what we'd like to see, and they would go off and do it. So they've led us in many ways. Because this isn't, if you've got a really good consultant, this isn't the first one that they've ever done. And so they can help guide you. And so what you're really focused on, again, go back to what do you want to see in the community? What do you want to see as the aspiration? And they'll go find the data, they'll put it into words that you get a chance to then talk about. So we spent a lot of time talking about the ideas, and I remember going back to the legacy plan. And I always thought of Richard as our historian. He knows everything about Lake Forest Park history. Um, and that was really nice because he could talk about, and if you have somebody like that, talk about what had come before and where you might want to be going. And we got into a lot of grammar.
A lot of what?
Grammar.
The Oxford comma. There was an actual motion.
There was, that was, there was clear, uh, unit, that uniting around the Oxford.
Appreciate your leadership on that. Well, like, you know, maybe, you know, what we both are saying, maybe think, you know, there was, there, there was a big emphasis on getting to the vision, the conference. But we spent a lot of time doing that. And, you know, I, I'm just wondering if, how you both felt about the, the amount of emphasis that was on that? Do you think it helped, um, just, you know, that getting, trying to get public input? You know, we did like small meetings with people. I don't know if you actually went out on one of those meetings, but it was kind of this meeting in a box thing. And do you, do you remember that? Do you, you think that was helpful, starting out the process, working on a vision? Putting a lot of effort into the vision, or do you more remember the most meaningful part, especially working through the, the document and, and thinking about it in terms of each of these issue areas that the plan has to cover?
Well, I think anytime you can have, you know, direct citizen input, its value. My, my memory is Steve that we spent much more effort going through the details of, of the plan of the different chapters. And that was where most of that happened. That's my.
I agree. We did spend a lot of time doing that, but I think there is also about the, talking about what we wanted to be. And, and that would be the sort of vision so that when you do go through the chapters, you have a framework that you want to think about. As you're talking about mobility or housing or climate or the environment and put it into a context. So if you come up with some grand themes, whether they be around things like housing, mobility, environment, climate, that can really help you when you're talking about a particular area to say, how do we encompass each of those into that? So for example, if you're talking about housing, well, how do you get around? How does it affect the environment? How does it affect the climate? What does it mean to talk about housing density? How does it affect your neighborhoods? And I think.
I just said, we have a number of vision statements in various documents that the city has. And so maybe even starting with looking at, and I agree, the legacy plan is a really good document that till I started running for city council, I wasn't, because I had not been on the planning commission, I wasn't as aware of that. And I think we also spent a lot of time on vision when we were talking about town center. So there's probably a vision statement and the post and safe streets plans too. So there, it, it might be good to compile some of those so we're not starting from scratch. Because I think there's a lot of good work that's been done by previous groups. So I just, I just was thinking their vision statements of multiple documents at this stage, so.
Can I ask what, what timeframe was that for? Do you recall?
I'm just looking at my notes. It was a couple of years old. Yeah. I, I'd have to check exactly who's bonus to see, but it was definitely a few years of where we started, you know, educating, educating ourselves. We didn't jump into certain changes right away. There was a lot of, you know, groundwork at the councils or the commissioners. We did this, we brought it, I remember we brought Lloyd Skinner, who was our previous planning commissioner. I still have that video I could share, but that probably getting dated now, ten years.
In hindsight, what are some things that you guys kind of reflecting on that process and it could have been a lot smoother, more streamlined if we focused on this? Is there something of that nature that you, in hindsight, within your?
I was trying to remember. I wasn't actually chair, as vice chair, and who was the gentleman who was chair? He did that for two years.
For the job.
No.
There was, um, he's someone who lived behind the southern gateway.
Yes.
Oh, Ray.
Yes, and Ray was very good. So he, he as the chair just sort of kept everybody on track. And yeah, I, it didn't seem rushed. It didn't feel like when we got done that we hadn't spent enough time doing it. I think we, when we finished, thought we had spent about the right amount of time doing it. Um, and so we, and again, a two-year process, so we had a good amount of time to talk. We also had time for the consultant to go away, do some work to gather the data. And the consultant did the bulk of the writing based upon the conversation. And that's really important because most of you don't have a lot of spare time. And it takes a great deal of effort to actually produce a document like that. And so our consultant was great, in my opinion. They were very organized. They had done it before. And based upon what we sort of talked to them about, what was important to us, they can go back and look at others and come back with suggestions and ideas.
Well, maybe to answer your question, it had to go saying in a positive way. I don't think there were a lot of things that were like, oh, my God, we should have done that. But things that did work really well, that I recall, people came really well prepared to, people really dug in chapters when there was, I think what Ray, Ray was very good at was saying, okay, by next meeting, everyone's going to read this chapter. Have your, your, you know, have your comments ready or send them out ahead of time. There was, he was very proactive in planning agendas and making sure, I think, working with Steve, make sure that, you know, we were really clear about what we're going to cover in each meeting. And, and I think there were times when we had extra meetings too. So that's something you, I'm not saying you have to do, but you might want to keep in mind as far as just because it's a lot of work, it's a lot, you know, getting through a lot.
Did you get a pretty strong public response when you reached out? Like the surveys and it's like you'd sound like an open house as well and.
Yeah, I think it was good response. So my memory is that it would, you know, I think we had a, something up the council.
We had a Saturday meeting over at the school. We probably did have an open house in council later on.
I could be getting our issues, but do. So I don't know. What's your memory?
Um, my take was that we had, we had a good public involvement, but it wasn't like a huge amount. But there was, I, I would describe it as consistent. So when you talk about themes for Lake Forest Park and you ask the public, what are those themes or vision? It's relatively consistent. So it's not like you need to do it five times and you get, get five different kinds of feedback. You're going to get pretty much consistent feedback.
The other thing, it's a, it's a lot for the public to get their head around. I mean, because it's, it's very dense document, how it's, it's role in the, the city and how the city functions is, is hard to understand. I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, just realize that that's, that's educating them on what the plan is and how it's used. Its purpose and all that is something that is worth investing.
But there are some topics that you'll get clear traction on, trees, streams, mobility, housing, climate.
Not so much on capital investment.
You are wearing two hats. If you think about it, you're representing the community by being here, but then you're also engaging with the community. So it's kind of a, you know, you have, you have two roles that are complementary. But you are here representing the community as well. So just wanted to mention that.
I, I, that's actually a note I wrote to Gloria. So I think that's really important, you know, to have confidence that you have a perspective. You are on the commission because you're a Lake Forest Park resident. And so you have, you know, a totally valid perspective and you are, your, your role on the commission is to bring that perspective and you know, have a discussion and come to, you know, some sort of consensus with your fellow commissioners. So I would encourage you to have confidence, think boldly, like John said, think, you know, big picture, think. You know, what do you say, 25?
Twenty-five years.
I did, uh, the other thing I would add is, uh, you know, the growth management plan is a, it's kind of a hierarchical plan in that, you know, the, there's the growth management plan for the state, but then the comprehensive planning process. Uh, there's a regional aspect to it that, you know, Pink County does their comprehensive plan, and then that kind of flows down to the, the municipalities within you have. Uh, there, there is a what I think is now called the 20 and 50 vision. That's a muted sound, regional council, because I, I haven't dug into their stuff recently, but they have, you know, different artifacts for all sorts of different topics, you know, like you know, parks, environmental transportation. So they've got kind of kits that you can use to kind of do your own planning and analysis. And I don't know how directly applicable they are, but just, just know that that information is out there and it, and it does, you know, it, it is supposed to influence the municipalities within the region. So there could be some good things to learn, you know, from the, not just from the bottom up citizens, but from.
Are we also going to be looking at Shoreline's cop plan? Because I just noticed that there's information in the other cop plan that sort of, you know, leads to Shoreline and, you know, some of the shared services that we use and we have to go there.
Well, there, there hasn't been, we're due to update a short line, and we have a draft really just needs to, council needs to get familiar with and decide if they're ready to adopt it. But the, the last time it was adopted was before the last cop plan update. So there's not a lot of new policy at this point. But I'm sure that, and we'll touch on sort of where the, the draft plan is and see if, you know, create some, some issues that maybe we need to address in the cop plan, knowing that it might be done next year.
Melissa, were you talking about the Shoreline Master Plan or Shoreline Community?
It was Shoreline Community. I think. No, no. Their activity of, yeah, because we don't have a lot of the, you know, I mean, when we have a, you know, a recreation center, we don't have, you know, there's like certain things we just don't have when like the school district even is really under Shoreline. And so that's why I was wondering if we're going to be like having to go over any of that stuff.
Well, you, we, you know, the, the, the idea is not only that you're consistent with, you know, regional the GMA plans, you're also, you're consistent kind of with, you know, what other surrounding jurisdictions are doing as well. That part's not really as emphasized when it comes to sort of getting the blessing of the county or, or the state in terms of being compliant. Um, but, but it's something that, you know, we can work on and you'll see when we get into the to the parks element later, that there is discussion of that, that, well, you know, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park residents use Shoreline facility. Uh, and so, you know, the, the plan encourages cooperation between jurisdictions as far as lots of different facilities that, that, you know, people are able to share. So in that aspect, yeah, there would be a level of discussion about the sharing facility.
John and Richard, what were, say, the three, five big issues you felt, you know, kind of were dominant in the processes you went through?
Issues as far as.
Cop plan issues, areas of, of emphasis or what?
Housing is one.
Yeah.
We also, didn't we have somebody come in and talk about the economic? Recall.
Sounds familiar, but then.
I mean, um, parks, housing, environment, less on climate.
So there'll be more.
Yeah, I was, I would say the, I agree, John, and I, I think what's changed in the last five years is just how much, how those things have gone from, you know, we thought five years ago, climate was still something we had a chance to get in front of. And, and I think personally, I think that's changed, has become much more of an urgent thing that municipalities have to address. Housing's same transportation. I think all the issues that we, you know, looked at are even more grateful now.
Because we weren't talking about middle housing five years ago.
No, we, we talked about affordable housing and, you know, we kind of made sure that it was in there, but there, yeah, I don't remember it being like, okay. You know, this is a big, something major that is.
Yeah, there wasn't a discussion that said single-family zoning was going away.
Not in so many words.
No, I.
It wasn't on the radar.
It wasn't, probably, yeah.
What about mixed-use commercial?
Oh, we did talk about that. I mean, that's a big part of the town center.
No, there was, I, I think you'll find that my, my opinion is that the, the current plan is good, but, and it's a solid foundation. Um, but like John said, I think a lot has changed that you're going to want to make it more updated.
There's like the, the issues, they were just a little fuzzy back then. It's not quite so, you know, the need to hear it on end.
I think that's a good way to put it. That's around housing, around the environment. Yeah, it, it's just, I think things have gotten more challenging in a lot of ways. I think funding for things like parks. The city has more parks, but I think, you know, funding those is running, is becoming a challenge.
I, I have to say, as a resident from a resident standpoint, I really.
I, I have to say, as a resident from a resident standpoint, I really felt that it reflected, um, kind of how I envision the city and, and see the values. That I embody and, and, and like, um, so I, I think it was really good to have you guys come in. I think it was, it was nice because it was, it's so broad that in some senses that philosophy is what makes it so difficult for us. But I just wanted to again say that this does truly reflect, you know, me as a resident. I don't know how, if you guys felt identified with what was in there. But I think it helps just kind of also looking at some of the other, you know, the climate change. These are all things that have come up for us as well after commission meetings. So. Yeah.
Yeah, and look at what, what, what is the, what are the big things that, you know, already listed many of the, the, the big things that the city has done since the last cop plan. Goes to downtown center, there's the cross plan. Any actions the city has taken and is the cop plan now, is it positioned well? Or that, though it's a next version of those things, or, or is it, is it up to date enough to, you know, support those things as well?
Are there, um, so you had mentioned climate change and, and some housing issues that you had mentioned. Are there other things that you kind of think, oh gosh, you know, I wish. Now that the click commit, the, this call plan is up for provision again, what are some things that you think, oh, I wish we could have. You know, now here we are, ten years later.
One thing, a, a diff, I would say a different kind of lens I would have on the cop plan now is. Equity. Is that a lot of these things, accessibility, you know, accessibility in parks. Clean water, you know, clean air, uh, to, you know, trails, transportation, uh, uh, housing. There's an equity component that I think is. I personally feel is a good plan to be near as sure. Or, or working goals.
I think that's a really good comment. I, I would offer climate. Because when we did this, climate was a topic, but I, I would make it a more specific kind of. Lens to look through each of the elements and say, does this help us with regard to the impacts of climate change? And that can be around housing and mobility of each of them.
Does anybody else have a question for the, uh, the previous commissioners?
Can you think of sort of process wise, what sort of, what the? The sort of, did you look at one particular topic, sort of mull over it? Then make the next week, you're sort of, you know, doing a lot of the, do you remember sort of just process wise, how you tackled each topic and for the duration of each?
My recollection was sort of about around a vision and so. We talked about, I think, what was important to us. And this is where the consultants really come in to do a good job. If, I don't know who it is this time, but they have a breadth of experience working with other communities. And so we could talk about things and they'd say, whoa, you know, in Kenmore, Woodinville or Kirkland or some image, they've done this kind of thing. And they would actually bring in us examples for us to read. And that was helpful to say, you know, that's kind of. Put into words what we're trying to articulate in our discussions. Uh, but ultimately they produce the, the chapters. And so then we started going through chapter by chapter. And I would offer that. If it seems like it's a lot of work. It's really a function of how much, uh, energy and input you want to put into it. Such as reading the other plans or reading other cities or investigating. But the other is that the consultants will lead you through the process. So I would say there's a lot of comfort for that. Because they will have done it before and so they will say, yes, we will actually be able to finish.
I am hoping we have a good consultant for this. I don't know what you have in mind, Steve, but, um. You know, I do think that having a good consultant is really key. We'll have to have a consultant for the parks board also. So I'm not sure how all this is gonna shake out, but. I do recall before I was on council that the consultant for town center was not as responsive to the planning commission. And so that was actually a conflict area and eventually it got worked out, but it was actually not. There is an example that isn't as good as what John was saying that we're trying to not repeat here. So, uh. But having a good consultant, I heard the, the same thing from some people like Don Feeny. You know, when you have a good consultant, it's really makes a huge difference to the final mission. So.
Yeah. So just on, on that, um, we haven't, uh, started our process perspective. So, so we'll probably have, um. A selection committee after we put out an RFP with a general scope of work that want accomplished with the emphasis and then we'll, you know. Hopefully get to know a half dozen or so, um, responses that the committee can choose from. And then probably that committee would make that, uh, recommendation to the council. Contract. And so it should be a pretty open process and, um, and hopefully we will get someone who's good. As, um, unfortunately the view is just sort of resolved and gone into other firms, unfortunately, but I would agree that was the insult.
May have to be cost effective too.
Yeah.
So it's something.
I know, it'll probably be up to the mayor. Uh, I, I'll make a recommendation, probably some combination of. By a commission with council members and, um, and the mayor would decide who the people are.
Are you still thinking sometime in February that that should be placed or?
I, I think we should be able to, you know, get the, uh, the, uh, art, the best proposals out there and publish. Um, you know, by late January or February, it may not be until, you know, um. Late March or early April, then we're actually ready to make a collection. It takes a while, uh, to get people, um. You, you have to give people, you know, some time to, uh, respond to get, to get good, uh, proposals. Um, and, you know, so this is a, it's fairly large project. It's, it's gonna be a budget of like a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars probably. We've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the, uh, Department of Commerce. Plus, I think you have a hundred and fifty thousand budget in this. You don't have to use it all, but you know, it's, it's there if we need it. But that's about what we spent last time. Cause if we had a, a statistic, you know, a phone surveys, well, I don't know. I don't wanna do that since, you know, now it's so much easier to do surveys online, but necessary. But, but yeah, so you wanna make sure you kind of carefully choose. Consultant and it was a lot less controversial than the council itself. So hopefully we won't get them.
I, I would offer some suggestions on consultants and that is to find somebody who, uh, has done this book. And are working on similar side cities. And that, the, I would highly recommend somebody in the local. Um, but also think about the team that you're gonna be working with. I would encourage that whenever you hire, that you get good principal engagement. That you just have a managing partner who shows up for the interview and the only people you see are the interns going forward.
Certainly.
And so you will find some very qualified first. And so, uh. Picking the firm is really picking somebody that you think shares your value. And the way that you wanna work together and share some of the values about how you perceive the provision for the city. Like first part is not that. And so, uh, think about how the firm works and will relate to you. And, and I'll describe it as you're looking for it then. Can you work with a firm that seems responsive to you that says? That you say, you know, I'm really interested in housing. What else has been done around in other areas? And they, they'll come back and say, this is what we did in Woodinville and this is what we did. It's some ambush. Well, then these are some examples that you might find interesting. If you can't in the interview process, get an idea that they're, you're only gonna bring one idea to you. Only not a good thing. I heard a lot of firms.
I think your point on having comparable values, because sometimes the consultants will drive to a certain. You know, outcome that they think is there to solve our outcome. So that's a, I think that's a good point to. Kind of exploring that in the interview process.
Say, uh, last thing is just, uh. You know. Thank you for the efforts you're going to put in and, uh. And, and also be very proud about that. You know, your, your name is going to be on that plan. For decades, maybe four to come. So, uh. You know, it's a real contribution, a real, uh, real contribution to the city.
Thank you for your contribution. And thank you for. I know where you live. Uh, no, thank you for, for coming out tonight and that was very helpful because, yeah, it was just so broad for us. We were kind of, yeah, we lost. Yeah. Um, are, are we still getting the missing middle housing presentation today?
They were not able to come. Um, probably updated that on the agenda, but. I, I think Maddie, I'm talking Maddie, she didn't think that they were, would be ready or they didn't care whether it was this month or next month. So given, um, that we have other things going on. See, it makes sense. Yeah, I'd like to thank you both for being so receptive to coming together.
I do have a book that I will leave, uh, planning the Pacific Northwest. It's a little dated now, but I actually thought it was very good. Uh, and I don't need it. We ever would like.
Again, thank you, as Richard said, for your efforts. And looking back, it was enjoyable. It was, it was work, but to be able to produce it. Was a good time. And you really come together if you haven't already as a planning. You spend more time together than you traditionally.
Um, so no missing metal. Uh, so I guess at this point, um, you wanted to share with us some of the pros, the.
Yeah, I just wanted, that was a good example. I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Since, since we had the fairly recent. Planning effort that, uh, the city went through on the post plan.
I don't, I'll take it if there is, but I don't. Did you have one? I don't. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. I got a couple of my computers. Okay.
Um, this is, this is a, you know, a pretty easy one, just to kind of see, well, uh, here's kind of where we were in twenty fifteen, kind of the policies. And then, um. And then, you know, twenty eighteen, you have a, a, a specific, uh, public, uh, engagement process related to parks. Uh, and so I think you'll see that, you know, it, it refines and focuses what's really, uh, you know, the, the important to the community in three years after this, um, that. And, and then, um, sort of thinking about, well, here's, here's things that when we have a consultant, we get to these, these policies, you'll, you'll be, you know. Aware of what the post plan says and, and, you know, looking at what they propose as changes are gonna make them go through the same process. You need to read this post plan before you suggest changes. Uh, and you're, you're able to say, yeah, you know, I think, uh, that kind of gets the point, but. But, you know, actually here, here's something that seemed very important that, uh, that you overlook. And so that's really, you know, where your, your background work comes in handy is when you, when you've got, um, a draft in front of you. And you're, you're able to say, you know, uh, to, 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 you know, add value to it. Because you're, you're familiar with all these plans we've done since the twenty fifteen.
And I just say the Parks and Recreation Board will be doing an update. This is a post plan. But as part of the public process, uh, they're gonna be developing both a master plan for all parts. And a master plan for the future development of the lakefront park. It's a, it's a big job. But I think a lot of, it's just like the cop plan. There's a lot of good elements in here. I think some of the wish lists of projects will be more refined. Um, you know, where it was more of a, you know, uh, here's five things we'd like to do, uh, kind of a process. So I think it will be a little more disciplined, but, uh, the successor to this plan will ultimately be. A master plan for our, our parks. Um, so, uh, but I think you've got, uh, as Steve says, a lot of. Your fundamental information here. So it's not. Um, it, it's going to be updated, but the fundamentals and the values and the basic approaches, I think, are, are reflected here.
I, I thought again, a very nice document. I'm surprised that the city has to be parks, actually.
Well, that's the Parks Recreation Board is trying to, uh, schedule their next thing is to do some walks. So there's more awareness. Of where all the parks are and how, you know, you can get to them. So. Anyway, that's, uh, that's one of their issues. And, you know, everyone knows animal acres. But, uh, a lot of people don't know some of the smaller parks like Five Baker Woods, which is, you know, our, our newest park for the lakefront park. So.
Yeah. So the, um. You know, the, the, um, here's, I pointed this page to you, um, in the, um. Uh, in my email to you last week was, this, this, this really kind of, um, sums up what, what the things that, uh, process led to in terms of basic. You know, areas of focus. So, um, you know, the first one is kind of based on a general planning principle that there should be so many acres. Apart for, for person, uh, and, and it, you know, for a thousand residents. And, you know, it's, it's not something that, um, a city like Lake Forest Park, which is kind of a, you know, it's already developed city. Uh, that doesn't have a lot of open land and really aspire to the level of, of, um. You know, what the, the, the sort of the national level, you're being compared with cities that have like lots of open space around them. If you continue to add parks, you know, because there's pastures here and there that were neighbors, they're predeveloped. So, so, you know, what, um, you know, the. We, that's one place where we're relying on the fact that a lot of people live closer to the school, uh, elementary school that has, or the cemetery that has part property. So, you know, that was really was just kind of checking off, you know, we had this discussion. I don't think it, it really is, even though it's number one. I would say that, um, you know, the, the number two was really the, the emphasis of this, this planning effort to that. Increasing, um, people's, um, access and, uh. Uh, the ability to get to a park that's nearby. And, and so that, you know, that. Uh, and so you, you know, when you look at the graphics in the plan, you see a lot of, of maps related to how, how far people are from existing parks, where the gaps are. And, um. You know, and so I think that that kind of led, leads to, um, you know, strategies that, that are related to sidewalks and trails. And, um, you know, which, which really is, well, you know, the, a lot of the. Outside of the, you know, the typical things that, you know, we need better facilities in each of the parks. You know, it's really looking at, you know, how, how do we get to some of these parks?
I think there are neighborhoods, I'll just say that, uh, already have commented now and then, when there's an opportunity. That there aren't enough parks accessible to them. So southeast. Uh, corner, kind of southern gateway area, though they have to burn fuelmen through there. Uh, there's a sense that they get ignored sometimes and northwest corner. Uh, and then every once in a while, the Briarcrest area near Briarcrest Elementary, which is half in Lake Forest Park. You know, and, and actually someone who my kids went to school with lives in that little triangle corner that's right by Kellogg. And she's in Lake Forest Park and her neighbor across the street is in shoreline. But, uh, then I think those three areas in my experience deal on that issue like. You know, we're, we're neglected a little bit when it comes to parks and park access.
And that's, that's kind of what the, the answer. And that's that's kind of what the the answer size and plan now, really, it was that. Right, yeah. So so and you know that, you know, maybe these people, some people don't, they they take walks in the cemetery or whatever, because this is open all the time. They don't, makes me feel it as much. And and but but it, you know, I think the people more along the, you know, the other side of 522 really are more likely to feel the lack of parks, even though they have Burt Gilman. It's like there's not, you know, spaces that where you would take kind of.
You're right, because folks in that area, they could go even to Amlin, you know, or some of those locations.
All right, all right. So, so then just switching over to our park zone. It was interesting just to, you know, see, you know, what what what, you know, what happened or or did is 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 the, you know, is there some sort of, as we're talking about, there's kind of a fuzzy gesture towards the issue here, you know, related to trails and it it sounds a little bit like, you know, what's what ends up being in the post plan. But but, you know, this is kind of the, you're looking at this policy PT2, that that's the goal. And then the policies under it are things that, you know, post plan directs more, addresses more specifically. And this is an area where, you know, we would look for a consultant to be recommending, you know, updates to these kind of policies that address, you know, connectivity between the, between the parks and and neighborhoods. And same thing for, maybe more to the point, the policies under the PT3, where I say brown stuff are parks and, you know, gather data using digital mapping. That's kind of what was done there in in the post plan that, you know, really brings into focus those areas that are under connected to the the park system that we have.
Can I pass this out to, I printed off off the compound, the sidewalk and the bicycle plan too. I got extra confidence. Because I I know in my neighborhood, too, like the question that comes up when I look at this is how walkable are these? And they're like, if they're on the map, that's great, but logistically, how to walk without negotiating traffic?
Yeah, so, you know, the, and this will probably also be underscored by the the safe streets report. It's a little part of, you know, installed with kind of a big fine, or judging all these things with the multiple consultants level and different levels kind of trying to help us keep track of all these things. They're all happening at the same time. But so that's really the basis of, you know, your your level of understanding of how these plans overlap is really going to be helpful in making sure that we get the most out of consulting to in updating and making sure the draft that represents something that represent some previous planning efforts, because, you know, the city spent a lot of time thought on each one of these areas. And it's a shame to to let any good idea sort of waste these documents. And I I would agree with Councilman Lebo there. Yeah, your consultant isn't, you know, isn't, you know, really, you know, blomming on to that idea of what everything seems to be doing. And maybe that isn't a good consultant. So we really want to be looking for somebody who, you know, is interested in synthesizing all of this.
Steve, can I make a request? It seems to me that we want to, in January or February, educate the Parks Board on what's in the comp plan, too, at some point, so that they can actually contribute and integrate well. So, because I don't think this is on their radar, has been mentioned by for your jab to that. So I think maybe when the the master plan process starts. But I think this would be helpful to them. Could I just say, one issue that isn't here that I've heard from my fellow council members is legacy properties, you know, properties where people have lived there for a long time. And they might retire or pass away. And, you know, it's a lost opportunity for the city to misacquire some of those properties that they have particular environmental value. But then again, we don't have funds for that. That was some of what we were going to do with the with the parks levy, you know, parks and sidewalk levy. But I just, I do think it's significant in the sense that we have some really big parcels where people have been living for quite a while that could contribute to green space for the city. And it would be a shame to see all those get townhouses on them, you know, it would upsets that might occur through state legislature. So I just, I only want to flag that issue because I don't see it covered really in in this.
Well, yeah, along those lines, that's that is an important issue. We have an opportunity to to acquire something like the Lakefront Park. It's great to be able to jump on it. It's also great to be able to show that you you gave thought to whether or not that property really meets your goals. And and so I I I feel like in the history of Lake Forest Park, we've got some really cool parks. But it, our park system is basically a result of properties that became available. And and that was, you know, it was just kind of, you know, that that was the main criteria. So one of the things that I thought was important for this post plan was to to develop an acquisition framework and things you think about, you know, that that should be, you know, should help you make a decision about when a property becomes available. Is it, does it meet your criteria? So council adopted this. And, you know, so it should be, we can look at the lake for, let's just see, you know, does the lakefront property address some of these things? So it's a potential provider, needed type of use, level of service now, so it could be increased park land under underserved areas. It could be required development, maintain sustainable fashion, invest grants, so it's that. It's appropriate for recreational uses under critical areas. And so we did an analysis, analysis of it. And there's still going to be a lot of, well, active space even after you address the the buffers and things. You know, if, and whether this is secondary or primary, it's like, who knows? But, you know, they're 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 the second of the second criteria, provides access to Lake Washington. So big check right there, you know, five, five points for that one. And, you know, it's right on the Burt Gilman, so it's going to have good pedestrian bicycle access, vehicular access, a little more challenge. Continuation trails, you know, so so things that you you can, this should be able to help the Parks Board and the council make a decision. Does this, you know, our our criteria? And if if it doesn't, maybe these aren't the criteria anymore that that you want to consider. Because, you know, this document now is going on through four, four years, a little by the soul. So, but but, you know, really, at this point, there's so many things that have been identified that are deficits in the process. We want to make sure that we're not just reacting to the latest property that's coming in.
Yeah. So I, I think that kind of raises a point on what considering, you know, this photo that kind of shows all the publicly owned land in Lake Forest Park. There's a lot of odd little parcels here and there. Is the city able to sell those off and put them in like a park sponsor to try and consolidate some of this stuff into, you know, so like, as Councilmember Foydy raised, like, there's a large parcel somewhere that becomes available. They have funds available to act on that.
I know, where there's a will, there's a way. I, you know, the, a lot of times, there these, you know, parcels that are in city ownership but not turned into a park, like a large portion of the 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 shop property, one of the recommendations, the process, better use like, do something with the area, well, that that area is a wet. So it's really not worth much in terms of selling it. So I I think, you know, that's that's a very legitimate thing to 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 propose. It's just a matter of, you know, is is are these are these parcels going to die?
Or are they just environmental buffers, you know, of various sorts? But I I'm not familiar with all of these either. So maybe there are three, you know, that are worth selling to get the funds drawn.
Yeah, I love how the the, how they put them into just the the ability to develop them high, medium, low, not appropriate. It was it was really helpful. And then you can really zero in on which properties are worth, you know, looking into, where are they located? Kind of find that overlap priorities.
Right.
I was actually going to suggest that we, for the goals, that we separate development and maintenance, because you kind of have developmental or acquisition goals that really don't, really should be separated from maintenance and sort of improving existing properties. And so just having its own goal, like its own policy being like funding development slash development or something like that, that's sort of separate from.
Yeah, yeah. I hope you'll hold on to that thought as we, you know, dig into it more deeply. Because, yeah, it is, it there are two different, totally different priorities to kind of with your own. Someone someone kind of leading those and not playing one off against the other. So that's, you know, I just wanted to, just kind of show you the overlap there. I don't know, there'll be, unless you have some more questions about something, saw on the the post plan that we want to talk about more. But, you know, we really just want to have a working knowledge of these documents. Oh, yeah, there's.
Would donations also fall into that? Like, is there something for donated properties for the city?
Well, there's, I don't, I don't think the the post plan really just, you know, says, you know, when when the opportunity comes up, she considers a following. It doesn't really recommend a specific kind of program to like encourage legacy, I think that's, you know, that's our legacy people, so donate the properties to the city. And most of these property weren't donated, they were just for sale. It's the city, sometimes you have a very good price for them because they were so encumbered by critical areas things. So, yeah, any other questions or not, like, if we want something else, I want to bog down in this, because, you know, I think you can, you know, it's pretty short. I mean, you know, you can, you can pretty, you can, you can, you can get a sense of 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 where there there's, I I guess a lot of the point I want to show, I think, from the time that the comp plan was developed, you know, there was a an emphasis on looking at the the goal PT5. There was a a real feeling that Lake Forest Park needed more active parks. And what I remember out of the the public engagement process of the post plan was that it it actually wasn't that important to be, that there be more active parks here. And and it really, it was this connectivity issue that that really bothered me in terms of, you know, that not being able to have the, feel like this kids could safely walk to the bus as far even if it wasn't enough a while. So, so that's an area, maybe, you know, they get sort of dialed down. If you know, you might look at, and that's why it didn't appear really, so I remember it in detail on that, that that selection criteria. But, I mean, you could do, you know, since this is all done, you know, there's who knows how many houses, properties have turned over, new owners, you know, maybe with younger children, maybe maybe active parks is back, you know, high demand.
That'd be interesting to see how the demographics have changed, which that might change.
Has anybody here actually visited some of these kind of smaller parks, the five acres?
Yeah, I've visited five acres, it's right up the street from my house, and also the McKinnon Trails. I thought that, yeah, I actually haven't seen the Big Tree Park. I didn't even notice this.
It's not, I mean, it's it's open to the public, but it's not like officially developed as a park. It doesn't like, you know, capital scientists expect it like first part.
One of, one of the ideas that the Parks Board have is they want to actually engage more in the community and coming to the park. So they, you know, sponsored that yoga in the parks at Animal Acres. And, you know, they they didn't know they would get five people and they were getting 50 people. And so it turned out to be something the city staff, you know, helped organize it, but so did the Parks Board members. And they'd liked, in terms of recreational access, they're not necessarily, except for pickleball, which is you know, a lot of priority for pickleball. They're they're just, they're trying to see, how do we get people to walk from one park to the other? Or come do an activity in the park as opposed to, you know, a lot of equipment and stuff like that. So I think I just, I think this is real, but it could be a much more nuanced kind of thing. Because I think the Parks Board wants to redo yoga in the parks next year, too, because it was so successful, you know. And so let's say you get, you have it for, you know, six weeks, you have, you know, a couple of hundred people. It's still something that gets people out meeting their neighbors in the park. So I I just think of recreation in a in a broader sense is all I'm saying.
At one point, we talked about adding a high schooler, high school student to the planning commission. I thought, was the parks or was the planning commission? I know at one point we talked about like having a high schooler.
The parks is trying to get to the high school.
Climbers too. It seems like this might also be something that would be great to have a younger person involved in it.
I'd like all young people to be involved. You know, I guess we have just this meeting, but then also January and then hopefully February. You guys have any thoughts or suggestions, or Steve, perhaps you have any ideas in terms of maybe vision work?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, I I think we, you know, we can talk some more about the schedule, but we have one one more agenda item. Yes. We can kind of spin that into that question of step, future steps. And at this point, I don't have a whole actual report, as I've said before, on terms of these housing legislation and and how the county and state are providing guidance is still very much up in the air. And I really think that this is exactly the kind of thing we need to leave to consultants, that are chosen to to come up with a plan that addresses it the way, you know, in the the initial scope that I showed you a couple of months ago, we talked about a housing action plan. So that that may still be what what we try to do. But, you know, there there are going to be some, you know, specific requirements that the county is going to articulate from the their their understanding of the Growth Management Act. And so right now, the county is getting a lot of pushback from jurisdictions about this approach to address housing needs. And and so they're working out the details and methodology. And, you know, I I wouldn't be surprised if this next legislative session, there are some tweaking, trying to, you know, make it the process more manageable for jurisdictions that, you know, are expected to create the opportunities for, you know, whatever, 200 units of affordable housing for people to make 30% of the average median income. You know, it's a, it's a difficult, big lift for small cities to do. And so, you know, that that's still very much in the works. And I have, you know, maybe in January, we've got a clear picture of that, while we're also looking, hopefully, at, you know, a more specific scope, how how we want to, you know, put the word out for the consultants. I think it's going to be more more open ended, like we said, what we've seen. more, more open ended, like we said, what I've seen from other jurisdictions, they're, they're saying, you know, uh, we, we want to do these, you know, half dozen, dozen things with your, with our comp plan update. And then it really wide open, expect the consultant to come up with ideas how to address that, instead of trying to be super specific, like the, the grant application I showed you requires you to do it. Um, so, uh, so still, uh, a lot to be determined on that, that issue. But, uh, in terms of like, you know, next steps, I think, uh, at, at the January meeting, uh, that would be my goal is to have, you know, a, a more, uh, pretty good idea of what we want to ask the consultant to do and to get your, your, your thoughts about that. And, and, um, you know, uh, in addition to maybe, you know, if you look at, uh, like safe streets and, and safe byways and seeing how those overlap with this one. It's just to make sure we're all, you know, kind of, um, following away with that, getting basically already all the planning.
Can I address housing a little bit? So in our city, you know, we have enough zoning to allow additional multifamily housing. And, uh, we are not below the growth targets as Steve has, uh, you know, occasionally mentioned. So we have enough, uh, zoning opportunity for housing to be built in our city, uh, between, uh, areas along Baca Way and Town Center and, and, you know, the other opportunities. Um, we also have tax incentives for affordable housing and requirements for multifamily housing of a certain size to have a certain percentage of affordable units. Those are new provisions. I don't think anyone's used them yet. Have they?
Nope.
See, yes, so, but we have, and we have a King County Housing Authority, uh, uh, you know, Affordable Income Housing Project in our city with Woodland Trails, so that was what, North, Woodland North, um, along Baca Way. So that's what we have. What's controversial is the discussion that cities have to implement and fund to the affordable housing uh, opportunities and then track progress on that. And that's something that we don't have financial resources to do. So, uh, just to distinguish between the regulatory structure and incentives and the, you know, are you affirmatively going out and partnering with people to develop, uh, affordable housing projects? So if you're Kirkland, you can probably, or, you know, even Woodville, you can probably afford to do that in ways that Lake Forest Park, you know, is not well positioned to, so Steve, I just want to draw that distinction.
Yeah, the, um, I don't think that these, of these new requirements are going to require us to actively create affordable housing. But it's going to require something like, you know, the ordinance that you were just referring to, to Council of the Town Center, where it says forty percent should be, um, affordable units affordable to this category of someone who's a dis- disadvantaged financially. What these, uh, new requirements are going to, what, uh, address is, or create the need for, is saying, actually not ten percent, not twenty percent, but like seventy percent of those units, if you're going to meet your targets, we're going to have to show that, uh, whenever a developer comes in and they're going to create, you know, uh, uh, they have a hundred units, they create seventy of them have to be, uh, affordable to these people who only makes fifty percent of the median income, which is unworkable. No developer is going to work under those.
I think you, you find developers who are working under the met twenty percent or ten percent.
And it, it's already, it's already a difficult, uh, for them to adapt to. And so that's what cities are saying to the county, but this is just, this is not going to happen. Nothing will happen if you make us adopt regulations that say that seventy percent have to be affordable. No one's going to redevelop and, you know, they're going to go elsewhere. And so, so that, but that, that's, that's a great way to kind of put it in perspective is, you know, we, we, we've made an effort. But that effort, uh, according to the, the, uh, the, the rules they're talking about, is just going to be a drop in the bucket. And so that's where some, you know, reality has to, uh, in the situation.
I think our ADU ordinance actually is more positive in that direction than a lot of things that are being talked about on the county and the state level. Uh, you know, because I do think that N A D U is likely to be more affordable, right? Just by its nature, as opposed to a quadriplex or something.
Yeah, it's still, the, the cost of construction per square foot is just crazy.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, that's, that's, that's a step in the right direction, you know, making, and, and we can do things to facilitate it. Um, like, uh, one of the, my to do's, my to do list is to, to get some, uh, architects involved.
The standard plans.
That could, uh, provide, you know, at least you'd say, you know, that they'd give you a fixed rate, so, you know, there's nothing standard about Lake Forest Park. That's going to work, uh, but, but it's like, if you go to this architect, they will charge you, you know, a flat fee, uh, if you want to pick one of their designs.
Right, and they have five designs, we've already pre-approved.
Right, and then they'll, they will make it fit the ground, if you want to put it on. That's where the, you know, the work is really, it's not in designing the, the unit. So like in Seattle, you can, you can flip the, they have, they have a design from this particular firm and you can mirror it and flip it, uh, but you know, the, the, the more you want to change it, the more it's going to cost you. But, you know, we'll, we'll make it, we'll get you the building permit, you know, for this flat fee.
I do, I do remember Calvin saying though, that our building permits take like three months and Seattle's take like over a year. Wow.
Yeah. I hope they, they would make it quicker to get one of their.
Standard plans, yeah. Sorry to get us off on this. Uh, there was, there was talk, uh, in sound cities, uh, which is multiple cities meeting about the fact that, you know, the county was thinking about mandating implementation of affordable housing. So Steve, what you're saying seems to imply that maybe they're giving up on that.
Well, I, I think it's, it's just going to have to be more realistic with that. Just the, the whole thing with the targets, the same process, but now it's, it's a, a greater challenge to, to come to a consensus because of this H B still twenty, twelve twenty, which is, is really aggressive. Um, anyway, so fifteen.
So I'm hearing, um, so housing, climate change, uh, the park, uh, the park access and, uh, uh, issue.
Trees and environment will always be the high on the radar for our citizens.
So, uh, would, would everybody kind of agree with, and then that of the taking the broad cop plan is kind of, I like the lens idea that Richard threw out.
I've been looking a lot at the economic development after, yeah, especially in light of like our recent kind of budget concerns.
Yeah.
I was, I mean, looking through the goals there, and I, I mean, I've only looked at Lake Forest Park ever five years. But in my, the time I lived here, I don't think a new business has like built a new building here. You know, there have been new businesses that have come in, but they've gone and replaced something. And I would be interested in looking at that chapter.
I would, I would agree, funding is always an issue.
It is an interesting topic because I always thought like we would get a lot of income from stage off loop, but all their employees are contractors. And so we get practically no money from deja vu. They set up their employment structure, so the wild bird, this is something that blew my mind. The Wild Bird Shop, when I first looked into this, was providing more tax revenue than on those day things. So, so I do think in firing into it and getting more that actual information, I would appreciate more getting an update on that myself and understanding, you know, where the development is, is actually contributing. What we know, we can tell was contributing to the community, right? But what's contributing to the tax base to, you know?
Cause I, I mean, just with talking to the neighbors over the course of several years, I've been regularly, it's surprising how many people believe that, you know, like the shopping center by Driftway and the Starbucks up there, they don't think that that's part of the Forest Park.
Uh, yeah.
Should have been.
It's like, it's like, you know, good about shopping.
We're eating McDonald's, uh, people, you know, people think that the Flo Anna's and McDonald's are in Lake Forest Park. So, yeah, on the other side of the street, so on one side it is, on the other side of.
We get Taco Bell.
Yeah, we have Taco Bell, yeah. But, but I see city defined to take those. Once upon a time, they didn't want to have too much in, in the original annexation times, the city didn't want to have too much commercial element. So now I think what you're saying, the money would have been nice.
Well, I think the, the Ballenger Shopping Center, uh, Charlotte Davis Punch, if they just were quicker, I think, I know, um, they are, um, Hudson. He, he was really bitter that we didn't get that.
I didn't know that, yeah.
It's a bad idea, I think, over the ten. Um, so economic development will grow in as well. As focus areas with this, that, round like, um.
For next time, for next time, so we're doing the walkabout, the walking trails, you, you said.
Just, yeah, we can, we can, if you, if you want to just, uh, kind of, kind of walk through economic development as well as, uh, anything that, you know, I think, I think the, um, the, uh, the, um, safe streets, safe, uh, you know, is, is going to relate more to the transportation element and some, what to the parks element as well. But, um, but, you know, let's, let's plan to talk about that, you know, development, just in terms of kind of touching on all of them.
Can I make a suggestion then, much like, um, Ray did? I think, uh, I, I like the idea of kind of us all having a homework, a focused homework assignment to maybe just focus on this one. They're short, it's the, you guys want to arbitrarily say economic development since that's, we've already been in climate change and, uh, I don't think, does that sound?
Yeah, maybe so.
Yeah, I'd like to repossibly take it with the transportation.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you guys want to prioritize that first then, or do you want to do both? Uh, transportation and economic, yeah.
And think about electric bicycles and things like that, which weren't really on the radar, you know, scooters, bicycles, things like that. Since we have an electric bicycle.
There's a bicycle. From the last call, those are from.
It's a little scary on Bird Gilman when someone describes it, right? Because even though they're captive, I think like fifteen miles an hour, that seems very fast if you're a walker.
Yeah. You ever had one run out on you? They're heavy.
They're terrible bikes.
Um, so that's the, next time we'll do it, we'll, we'll all have a chance to kind of, um, dig into, and then safe streets, is that a?
We'll say, I'll, I'll send you a link to safe streets, that'll be like planning effort that has happened since the cop man, uh, and it should relate, you know, primarily to the transportation. Especially, let's see, there's a lot of emphasis on, uh, pedestrian, uh, level seats, level seats for sidewalks, for, for bikes and pedestrians. And so that, once again, us, it was sort of this, you know, puzzling, um, talked about thing that, you know, I, I think we can be more specific about in this.
Also traffic calming, um, so some of those little volleys, you see those inexpensive little and just try to slow down traffic, uh, are part of safe streets and especially with increasing cut through traffic to the light rail stations. You know, if you think of one forty fifth, one eighty fifth and, uh, Mount Lake Terrace, we're going to have through our city in three different locations really cut through traffic to each of those, I think, because they're all going to have parking garages. Um, so, you know, I do think that that's, it already occurs, but it wouldn't intensify if ridership itself. Who knows about that issue, but it would be good to think about that in terms of traffic calming.
Um, just kind of on the side, there was the overlay program by my house, I'm pretty happy, have any, uh, they put those concrete, um, um,
curves.
Curves, and I just love, was that really expensive to?
Well, I will say council member Levo is a strong advocate that when we do street overlays, we should look at that. But you have, there are one or two neighbors who hate those and who have been very vocal. But it was an idea to provide a, a fairly inexpensive protected walkway, uh, for, uh, for people. So I think the council was strongly in support of it, but there are one or two neighbors who, you know, hate them now, so.
When I go to the blocks that.
That, that, we appreciate that because we've only heard from the complainers.
Oh, no, we are so happy.
Against them. Uh, they get in the way, uh, people drive over them.
No, no, they're, they're very thoughtful.
Driving over.
They're very high and blocking driveway, um, I love one in front of my house, just.
But we're actually going to do more of that since we weren't able to pass Prop one. Uh, what we've asked our Public Works Department to do is every year when we design our street overlay updates, which we do to keep our streets from, you know, falling apart, that we look at a, come, we see if there's an opportunity for a component um, that gives us a, a, a protected walkway like that. So that was our first step for that. And, um, if, um, and that may mean that we can do fewer overlays because there is an extra cost associated with that, but it seemed efficient to us to do it that way. So that was really a, a council policy initiative that I think has worked pretty well, but we have heard complaints about thirty.
All our, everything.
The other complaint I heard is there's a gap, so, you know, that, that could be, you know, there, there's a gap, uh, where there isn't a protected walkway.
Right, I'm, I'm a gap, that's okay, but, yeah, that's okay, but it, uh, but yeah, it just, my kids are there, the, and I, we are at the five acres and there's no way that we'd ever go visit that on foot, I mean, we live.
Right, because of the traffic.
Yeah, there's, yeah, we just can't go there.
Well, I appreciate that. I won't actually pass that information on to my colleagues who have been hearing the complaints lately.
No, we love it though, okay, yeah, my neighborhood loves it, so.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that your neighbors like it too.
Yeah.
We're, we're still going to continue with that effort, but, uh, uh, anyway. Thanks for that.
Yeah, sorry to digress, I apologize. So are we, so we do transportation element and then the how economic, uh, excuse me, the economic development. Uh, while I get a chance to, kind of, do that as a public assignment, and we'll get a link to safe streets.
Mm hmm.
Uh, any, any new business then?
So Steve, council member Casover mentioned in passing that because of the sound transit sixteen foot high retaining wall, she thought the planning commission would take up the issue of planning of retaining wall zoning requirements. And I was, as the planning mission liaison, I was unaware of that. Don't write that.
Maybe we can adjourn.
I don't want to be disrespectful to my colleague in other words, but I was taken by surprise and so, um, I will follow up with her, I have just forgotten to do it, but this made me think of it. So have you heard anything about that assignment to the planning?
Tell you what I know after we adjourn.
Okay, that would be good, okay, thank you.
I'll tell you all what I know.
That would be helpful because I was, I was like, and I was on the meeting virtually, so I didn't have a chance to go on and chat with her, so.
So reading the room, I would like to motion to the.
Okay, uh, so there's no, uh, do we, do we have to go through the additional? Perfect, so any, a second, did I, okay, uh, all those in favor?
I.
Perfect, and then we circulate this, this box must be empty, so, let's go on, everybody perhaps. What, is there any?